Morning, everyone, and welcome to Perth County Council this fifteenth day of December. I'd like to call the meeting to order. If everyone could please bow their head for a moment of reflection. Thank you. I'll read our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that Perth County is situated on the traditional land of the Ananishabey, who have a longstanding relationship with the land and water throughout the region. We honor and respect the history, languages, and culture of the diverse Indedinas, Matisse, and Inuit people who call this territory home. As a county, we have a responsibility for reconciliation and the continued stewardship of the land on which we live and work. If anyone has pecuniary interest, you can disclose it now or as the meeting goes along. Sorry, confirmation of the agenda. Is there anything that anyone wishes to add to the agenda? See, no one. And we need a motion that the December fifteen, twenty twenty-two agenda be approved. Moved by Counselor Aitchison, second by Counselor Ternkowski. All in favor? Carried. Okay, we have eight items under consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like pulled or they have any questions on any of those items? Counselor Orr?
Unmute. Just wondering about six point six, if we could. Do we send a letter to support via rail coming to the region? I know Stratford sent a request.
Sure. So you'd like to pull that one out, then?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else have any one they want pulled out? No? Okay, so then the council receives a consent agenda item six point one to six point six and six point eight, and approves the December one, twenty twenty-two wardens election and regular council meetings minutes. We need a mover and a seconder moved by Counselor Smith, second by Counselor Orr. Any more questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, now we'll go to the one that Counselor Orr asked to be taken out. So. Tyler, do you have a motion that we forward a letter of support?
So through the warden, absolutely, we can send a letter. So we'll just do a simple motion that council direct staff to send a letter. Is there any specific individuals or organizations that you'd like the letter sent to?
Counselor Orr?
I have nobody specific. I just think it's a good idea and would like to keep that service coming to our area.
Okay, Counselor McKenzie?
I don't think it would hurt to copy to Minister of Agriculture and Food because it is a rural concern.
Okay. Is that okay?
Probably our MP as well, I guess, through the warden.
Okay. Okay, so Counselor Orr, you wish to move that?
Yes.
And seconder? Sir Ternkowski? All those in favor? Carried. Okay, now we're going to, we don't not have any public meetings or public hearings or delegations. So we'll move to staff reports. And the first report is from the C A O. And it's the Emergency Management Program and Bylaw Update. So. Laurie, the floor is yours.
Do we have?
Just got to bring work in.
I'm just promoting Rick presently.
Thank you.
Morning, Rick. How are you this morning?
I'm well. How about yourself?
Good. Good. So we're on your report, Emergency Management Program. I'll let you take it away.
Okay, fair enough. Thanks very much. This report was actually written by David Clark, who is enjoying his time, his retirement down south, so I'll be presenting it today. The recommended action that council receives the report titled Emergency Management Program Bylaw Update. Just a bit of the background, just why this report needs to come forward. Provincial legislation requires that all municipalities have a program, an emergency management program, as well as a designated C E M C or Community Management Program Coordinator. So this report is really just to recognize David as the outgoing C M C and myself as the new incoming C M C for both county and the lower tier municipalities. Twenty-two thousand twenty-two, as David notes, was a productive year. It was a big year for the Emergency Emergency Management Program throughout the county. First started off with a review of the program in general. Its current, its capacities, its staffing requirements, the levels of training and education that people had, which then resulted in a development of a multi-year training program, which really just gave people an outlook of what we could be doing or what we should be doing as we move through through two thousand twenty-six. This plan now referred to as the Integrated Preparedness Plan is forecasted out through two thousand and twenty-six. Training also occurred for the emergency control groups this year, as well as the scribes that would be in the emergency operation centers, two important groups. And then lastly, we had the awareness session last week for the senior elected officials. The Integrated Preparedness Plan really outlines again through two thousand twenty, two thousand and twenty-six. It gives people a longer term view of what's coming down the pipe, what they can expect, so they can really start planning around their own schedules to fit emergency management into that. So it includes things like the C M C meetings, annual exercises, any training programs that we're forecasting out to give people plenty of notice, both for scheduling of staff and ensuring budgets are in place if they need to be there. So that speaks to the training piece. Another piece, which is actually a requirement of the provincial legislation, is the development of a hazardous identification risk assessment, or commonly referred to as a H I R A. That was also completed this year for the for the municipalities and county. We worked in conjunction with a Masters of Engineering Program at the University of Toronto as sort of a third party assessor, which is an important point. Having somebody from outside look at our risks and mitigation measures is, it helps us stay honest. So that was a, it was a good group to conduct that with. Essentially, the province gives us a list of, they believe, is about thirty-five different risks and hazards that are commonly occurring within the province of Ontario, and then we rank ourselves against those. So, you know, how often are they occurring, what existing mitigation measures are in place, et cetera? And really gives us a ranking of of most risky, most, the ones that are most likely to occur, and then the impacts in our municipalities. So the high row is conducted. It's, one has been done for for all the municipalities, and we'd really like to start using this as a, as a operational development tool. Rather than just develop it and put it on the edge of a desk, which a lot of places will do, we want to use it for departments to to focus on when they're planning, when they're looking at work plans for the next, you know, three to five years, and how they could build out their own departments and using the hire as a tool versus a check in the box from provincial side. Another requirement of of the province on an annual basis is exercises. They were done this year in Perth County. All five municipalities had their exercise in September twelfth and fourteenth. And that's all we have to say about that. And then as of today, or as of today, anyway, we have submitted all of our provincial compliance documents to the province. At this point, we have heard nothing back from the province to say we are not compliant. So usually they review in late January, early February. If there's any issues, they'll, they'll send us notification back. It's not anticipated, however, that we'll receive anything negative. We have checked all the boxes that are required throughout the year. So at this point, we do, we do not expect any issues from the province on non-compliance. I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions of the report? Counselor Aitchison?
Lot of question per se as a report, but something I read in the paper the other night. Good report. City of Stratford hires somebody to do their hazardous waste management. And they indicated that would be for all of Perth County. Have we had any discussions with them?
Not as yet. I haven't spoken to the city yet, but that's something I can definitely look into.
Okay, anyone else? See, no questions. We do have a motion that council received the Emergency Management Program and Bylaw Update Report for Information. Moved by Counselor Kasonberg, second by Deputy Warden Callum. Any more comments or questions? All in favor? Carried. Okay, thank you. Now we'll move on to economic development and tourism, and the first report is a P C Connect. And I believe Maggie's going to do that. Morning, Maggie. How are you?
Morning, Warden. I'm great, thanks. How are you?
Good, thanks. Okay, the floor is all yours.
Okay, thank you. So through the warden, good morning, everyone. Thanks so much for your time this morning. I am just joining you all this morning to provide a very brief update on the P C Connect Community Transportation Project. For our new councillors, since launch, I have been reporting to county council on a monthly basis just to keep council informed on our operations. And of course, this is our last monthly update of the year. So to date, P C Connect has serviced over twelve thousand rides, and it's become a very dependable service for many of our residents to get to work, to get to healthcare appointments, social services, visit friends and families, and just simply stay connected to the community. So in efforts to keep this much-needed service on the roads for as long as possible, we have recently submitted an official business case to the Minister and Associate Minister of Transportation, as well as the M T O staff to formally support our request for additional funding. So although the province announced additional funding last year for an extension period of twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five, unfortunately, it's just not enough to fund the service for the full duration, especially with the current state of fuel prices and inflation. So the business case that we submitted in partnership with the city of Stratford really emphasizes the need for public transportation in our rural communities, the rationale for it, the impact that P C Connect has had to date, and the financial ask for additional and continued support for the P C Connect service. So since the submission of the business case earlier, sorry, early November, we have continued to follow up with the minister and the M T O staff requesting meetings to further discuss this proposal. We have not heard back yet, but we will certainly keep council updated on any advancements. As always, we are continuing our efforts on marketing and advertising and community and employer outreach to really grow the P C Connect service. So multimedia marketing campaigns are ongoing, which includes social media, both paid and organic, print media, radio ads, billboards, and so much more. We're also working on always coming up with creative promotions and creative channels to really reach our residents. Most recently, we have participated in a few holiday parades, which was really well received by our community members. We sponsored pictures with Santa, which got into the homes of nearly five hundred families throughout North Perth. And we're currently promoting P C Connect for fare passes for purchase for holiday gifts. They're the perfect stocking stuffer, and there's truly nothing more moving than the gift of connection. So we've also recently offered a free ride day this past Black Friday, which promoted our residents to get into the community, try the service, and really support local. So this campaign again was heavily promoted through social media, radio ads, and print media. And as a result, the Free Ride Day did result in two times the ridership as our average daily ridership the previous month. So we had a great turnout, and we welcomed many new faces on the board of PC, on board P C Connect on Free Ride Day. In terms of service enhancements, on October twenty-first, or sorry, October twenty-fourth, rather, we did implement new route enhancements, which included an express trip on Route A and multiple changes to Route B. So these included the removal of underutilized stops, the removal of Saturday service, and the addition of two new trip options, which resulted in more frequency for riders and an expedited route path. So although the ridership numbers are early, and it has only been about a month of operating, unfortunately, we have not seen the growth on the Route B that we expected or had hoped for, and ridership continues to be low on Route B. So we are continuing to work with our service provider to really develop new route options and service models to better utilize the funding and our service hours for Route B, which will be aligned with our contract negotiations with our contract or service provider for March of twenty twenty-three. So that being said, overall, our ridership for P C Connect service has been overall very positive. We have served over, as I mentioned, twelve thousand five hundred riders to date, and we averaged at about an eighteen percent growth rate month over month since the launch of the service. And I mentioned, we continue to work with our community partners and our employers and heavily market, market and advertise the service to really hope to grow ridership for P C Connect. So with that, my very brief P C Connect update report is before you all this morning, and I welcome any questions or comments that council may have pertaining to the P C Connect project.
Thanks, Maggie. Any questions for Maggie? Nope, see no questions. We have a motion that council receives the P C Connect November twenty twenty-two update for, report for information. Moved by Counselor Duncan, second by Counselor McKenzie. All in favor? Carried. Thanks, Peggy.
Thanks so much, and happy holidays.
Yep, thanks. You too. Okay, now we're going to move to corporate services, and the first item is the closed meeting investigator agreement, and I think Tyler's going to do that.
Thank you, Warden Naggetz. Good morning, council. Through, through the warden to council. Before council is the closed meeting investigator agreement report. Municipal governments in Ontario must be transparent and accountable. Section two thirty-nine of the Municipal Act two thousand one contains the exceptions to an open meeting. Mister Stewart is the county and the lower tier's current closed meeting investigator. Staff are recommending that Mister Stewart's contract for another two years be renewed. Council has not required the services of a closed meeting investigator, as there have been no requests for investigations. Staff at the county and lower tier municipalities are bringing forth this report. So if you haven't seen it, you will be seeing it shortly at your lower tier to renew. Accordingly, if the county chooses not to appoint its own meeting investigator, the Ontario ombudsman would be the default closed meeting investigator. Should council pass this report and approve the renewal of Mister Stewart's agreement, we will have a bylaw show up later on in this meeting to correspond with that. That concludes my report. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to take those now.
Okay, thanks, Tyler. Any questions for Tyler? Counselor Kasonberg?
Good morning, Warden, and and thank you, Clerk Sager. Could you advise? Do you have any sense of what proportion of municipalities in Ontario do not appoint a closed meeting investigator and in fact allow the ombudsman the privilege of of that investigation responsibility?
So through the warden, it's, it's interesting that you ask that because I just looked that up. And anecdotally, it would appear that majority do go with an appointment and not for the ombudsman. But I don't have direct numbers on that right now.
And if I might further, just, just quickly, do we have any sense of the the total number of closed meeting investigations in Ontario in the last year, for example?
So through the warden, I don't have that number either, but I can certainly get that and supply it to council if that is the wish.
Okay, any other questions? See no questions. We do have a motion that council receives a closed meeting investigator report for information, and that council approves the renewal of the agreement with Gregory Stewart to serve as Perth County's closed meeting investigator, and that the warden and the clerk are hereby authorized to sign and enact the agreement to appoint a municipal investigator. We need a mover and a seconder moved by Counselor Smith, second by Counselor Aitchison. Any more comments or questions? All in favor? Carried. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the October-November update for Corporate Services, and I believe Annette's going to do that.
Good morning. The report provides an overview of Corporate Services Department activities for the months of, months of October and November twenty twenty-two. For the new councillors and the seasoned councillors, this is just a brief refresher. By way of background, this is typically a monthly report, and the purpose of the report is to provide highlights and updates on various projects that are happening within each division in Corporate Services. So I typically touch on a few high points to keep council informed. You'll hear at during our budget session, you'll hear more about each of the divisions. But very briefly, the five divisions in Corporate Services include Court Services, P O A. And the Provincial Offenses Division administers charges, convictions, and enforcement. Court Services has an intermunicipal service agreement, and fine revenue is divided at the end of the year between Saint Mary's, Stratford, and Perth County based on the location of the offense, and then to the member municipalities based on weighted assessment. Technology Services provides the technology solutions that are needed to support the delivery of municipal services, and G I S manages all of the geographic information systems, data to provide accurate property and asset management information to council, staff, local municipalities, and the public. The next division, Legislative Services, provides secretarial services to council and committees, and they manage public, they manage requests from the public for information, accessibility, the forestry program, commissioning, and the cultivating opportunity grant. Archives, they are permanently responsible, they are responsible for permanent valuable records owned by the county, Stratford, and the member municipalities. This, too, is a joint service. And finance is responsible for the budget, investments, borrowing, procurement, reserves, payroll, all of the county's financial information. Within this report, you'll see various projects that each division is currently working on, and you will see quick updates regarding those projects. A few things to highlight for council. For Legislative Services, they supported joint orientation that had a hundred and two attendees, as well as the seventy-fourth Annual Perth Municipal Day. Provincial offenses are working to schedule backlogs of early resolution matters, and we are monitoring developments related to the administrative monetary penalty system, which would allow for the implementation of school bus armed cameras. This is an ongoing project, and we are taking a very measured, considerate approach. G I S has been providing support for the new official planned project, and I T has deployed a new staff technology support request system. Archives will soon be wrapping up its fifty treasures of the archives, which was a wonderful and unique way to promote archives and to celebrate its fiftieth anniversary. The grant program, I believe that they, we've received six applications, which will be brought forward to council for consideration in the new year. You'll also see within the report where staff have engaged in professional development. And this is an important component because you'll see the efforts that staff are making to increase the bench strength of our very, of our, for council and for the delivery of services. You'll also see staff introductions in this report, and you'll see continuous improvement projects such as the improved I T help desk ticket system and the review of tracking staff time and attendance. And also included in the report are highlights for the upcoming month. And on that note, I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, thanks, Annette. Any questions for Annette? Counselor Kasonberg?
Thank you, Warden Naggetz. I'd want to turn my attention just briefly, if I can, to the administrative monetary penalty system and get a sense from Ms. Diamond, if I can, about what we're learning, about what's happening in other municipalities in terms of implementation. I believe A M O also may have issued some supports or early information, but just sort of a sense of where we're at, given that the legislation's been kicking around for a little bit now, and that we had certainly encouraged progress on this file.
So through the warden, by way of where we are currently at, in September, there were some provincial regulations or or guidelines that came out, and we have been watching and monitoring the the guidelines. We're also looking at what other jurisdictions have been doing with regards to implementation. And anecdotally, what we are aware of is that it is not going as smoothly as what was hoped. So that's the reason, one of the reasons why we're taking a very cautious approach is, you know, we'd like to iron out the wrinkles and come back to you with, you know, a clearly articulated plan to say, here's what we can do, and here's what we need to do. So at this stage, it's slow and steady. We are taking a little bit of a hands-off approach to see how these guidelines are being interpreted and applied. But anecdotally, I don't think that the implementation is as smooth as what the province was hoping, which bodes well for us because that's let some of the other municipalities work out those wrinkles before we, we get our hands dirty.
Uh supplementary, thank you. Ms. Diamond, is there a sense that that perhaps the province has been dragging its feet in terms of of providing the relevant regulations and guidance to municipalities about how to act with regards to this? Because certainly the need remains, and and if the province is is not doing its part, then perhaps this council needs to also contribute to the chorus and send a letter to the appropriate ministries, letting them know that we'd like to see more progress.
Oh, through the warden, I don't get a sense that the province is dragging its feet. I do get a sense that the project is much bigger than what is, has been anticipated, because you have to have the right systems and equipment that are put in place in order to be, to do this. So it's not as simple as simply installing a camera at a, you know, at a stoplight on a school bus arm. You need to have proper agreements to work together with the Ministry of the Attorney General, as well as the Ministry of Transportation, so that you're taking pictures of people's license plates, and you have access, and you're charging the owner of the vehicle. You're not charging the actual driver. And there is a difference in that. And then with the administrative penalty system, you do need to set up a separate way of adjudicating these matters, because it is, as I mentioned, the owner. And there has to be a way or an appeal system that is potentially diverting it from the court system. So it's a long, measured process. It is costly. I think it's much more costly than what most municipalities anticipated. And it really is a, it's a, it's more of a safety initiative, because what most municipalities are finding, it's not generating revenue. So we need to be prepared to commit to that cost as a safety initiative.
Okay. Excuse me. Anyone else with questions? See, no questions. We do have a motion that council receives the legal versus October and November twenty twenty-two update report. Moved by move by Counselor Orr, second by Counselor Duncan. Any more comments or questions? All in favor? Carried. Okay, then we're going to move on to the twenty twenty-one draft audited consolidated financial statements. And I believe Corey is going to join us for that. Corey, how are you?
Warden Naggetz, how are you today?
Good. Good. The floor is all yours.
Thank you very much. So in front of you, you have, actually, I'm going to share my screen and bring up the draft financial statements because the, the statements were not attached to the report. They were sent out late yesterday. So within the statements, essentially, these statements comply with generally accepted accounting principles that are recommended by Public Sector Accounting Board. They do include two separate outside boards, which are proportionally consolidated into the financial statements. And these two outside boards are the Herein Perth Public Health, as well as the Spruce Lodge Long-Term Care Facilities. So within the financial statements, the balance sheet, you'll notice that the consolidation has about twenty-seven million dollars in financial assets with about fifteen million in financial liabilities, which brings our net financial assets to just approximately over eleven million dollars. This then makes up a component of our total net municipal position, broken out by, within our tangible assets, our net value of our tangible assets, as well as inventory and pre-pates. So our balance sheet is sitting at just under a hundred and fifteen million dollars. Within the income statements, you'll know that within our actuals that they're slightly higher than what we had budgeted and within the consolidated parties as well. To note is the, these items are related to the continued pandemic and the continued efforts from the provincial government to fund those efforts. We were budgeting about seventeen million in government transfer provincially, and we received about twenty million dollars within these financial statements. That in itself is that you can look at the health services line within the program with a nineteen million in their expenditures versus what, what we had budgeted, about sixteen million. For total revenues, we just show over fifty-three million dollars in revenues with close to fifty million dollars in expenditures with a surplus of about three point seven million dollars. And then that essentially brings us where we get to our net municipal position for this year. Within the notes, the Uh, within the notes, uh, the change in proportion consolidation is, is related to, um, weighted assessment percentage changes between the partners, and therefore our percentage changes as that change occurs. And I'll break it down to the, um, basis of our consolidation, you'll notice that there's a change in percentages through, uh, the HPPH program, as well as, um, uh, Spruce Lodge. Just the highlight is, uh, within the report, it says, uh, Note Seven, but in Note Nine breaks down our net municipal position, uh, in relation to, uh, the hundred and fifteen million. And Note Nine is on page twenty of this, uh, statement. And we do have our investment in our tangible, uh, capital assets, about ninety-five million of that total one hundred and fifteen million. And, um, about two million is in essentially in current funds or inventory or pre-pays, et cetera. And with our reserves totaling about, uh, eighteen million dollars in reserves, we do have a slight unfunded WSIB balance between what our liability is versus what's in our reserves. But that overall makes up our one hundred and fifteen million dollars in, uh, our net municipal position for twenty twenty-one. And then the rest of the notes are just some more additional information. This is how the twenty million dollar breakdown, um, highlights. We did get some additional provincial money between the HPPH programs and Spruce Lodge, uh, as well as some additional paramedic service money, uh, over and above, uh, what we had, um, uh, essentially received in our general program, uh, COVID dollars were still, were being received in twenty twenty-one to offset the increased costs in relation to COVID in twenty twenty-one. If there's any specific questions on the financial statements, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, thanks, Corey. Is there any questions on the financial statements? Could you put my screen?
Yeah, sure, for sure.
It's okay. Thank you. Any questions on those statements? See no questions. We do have a motion that County Council receives a twenty twenty-one draft audited consolidated financial statements report. And the council approves the consolidated financial statements for the fiscal year ended December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one, as audited by the firm BDO Canada LLP. We need a mover and a seconder moved by Counselor Atkinson, second by Counselor Smith. Any more comments or questions? All in favor? Barry. Okay, now we're going to move on to our twenty twenty-two quarter three variance and year-end projections, Corey.
Thank you very much, Warden Nagets. Uh, this report essentially is bringing us to, uh, end of Q three and, and looking at projections to the end of the year. Um, within the report, you'll notice that, uh, operationally, we're looking at a, uh, three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollar deficit. Uh, this is strictly specifically within, uh, our winter maintenance area of the overall budget. Um, the first part of the, of the report is the capital budget. We're looking to spend, uh, approximately, um, uh, ten point six million dollars, uh, which is slightly less than what we had, uh, budgeted, but, uh, there are some major projects that are being delayed until, to twenty twenty-three. Uh, I, I can go back to the operational budgets. And to note is that, uh, within Roads Division, it's a deficit of about half million dollars. Uh, and we do trend about thirty-five to forty percent. As you can see out there, our trucks will be on the road significantly today, putting the salt down. Um, and that does have a significant impact, uh, on these weather events. Uh, in our, in our winter maintenance program, we're looking at about a deficit of about six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, we do have three hundred and fifty thousand within our, uh, winter maintenance reserve, and it would be recommended that we utilize that to offset that deficit. Uh, and we're also looking at to, uh, uh, essentially change the allocation between our, uh, regional roads revenues to put more to the operations, uh, and to offset the remaining deficit that we do have, uh, projected for twenty twenty-two. There are some divisions that have some surpluses within, uh, the Miss Valley. They are located in the Note Two of the report. Uh, and then with the use of those reserves, the remaining surplus of about a hundred and twenty-nine thousand would be looked to put back into the levy stabilization reserve. So if there are any specific questions on this report, I'd be happy to answer them.
You have two saved wireless voice messages. First, you ask.
Any questions for Corey's report? See no questions. We do have a motion that council receives a twenty twenty-two quarter three variance and year-end projections report. We need a mover and a seconder moved by Counselor Duncan, second by second by Counselor McDermott. Any more comments or questions? All in favor? Barry. Okay, and now we're going to move on to the general insurance renewals. Corey?
Thanks, Warden Nagets. Uh, the, these are twenty twenty-three general insurance renewals received from, uh, AON, uh, Reed, uh, Stenhouse. Uh, within the report, to note, the increase from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three is about fifty thousand dollars or ten percent of our overall, uh, uh, general insurance, including, uh, property and, uh, auto. Um, it's still, uh, having an outline coverage of a fifty million dollar liability on our general. Uh, and it does also incorporate, uh, cyber, uh, cyber insurance, uh, liability insurance. Uh, is there any specific questions on these? This report will be happy to answer them.
Okay, any questions for Corey on insurance? See no questions. We do have a motion that Perth County Council receives a general insurance report, and that council approved the general insurance and risk management services contract for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three to AON Reed Stenhouse Inc., and that the treasurer be authorized to sign the necessary documents to effect the renewals. We need a mover and a seconder moved by Counselor McKenzie, second by Counselor McDermott. Any more comments or questions? Counselor Atkinson?
Good question, and I should have brought this up a minute ago. What is our coverage for cyber insurance? What's the limit?
The, I, I don't know. It's essentially security. I could, uh, uh, provide that information offline. Uh, I don't know if it's something that, you know, somebody would look at, that, oh, they have this limit uh, of insurance that, but, uh, Counselor Atkinson, I can provide that, the limit offline.
Yeah, because anybody I know that's had that issue, it's cost them far more than they could have possibly imagined.
Okay, any more questions? All in favor? Eric. Okay, thanks, Corey. We're now going to move on to Public Works, and the first one is the Courthouse Campus Facility Project Update. And I believe John is going to join us for that. Morning, John. How are you?
Good morning, Warden Nagets. Good morning, Council. Uh, two reports from Public Works today, and I'll be handling the first one, updating our two major facility projects. Uh, the other report provides more detailed information on an important culvert replacement on Perth Line eighty-six east of Listwell. And Bill Wilson will be along shortly to present that report. Uh, onto our Courthouse Campus Facility Projects Update. And for the benefit of our new council members, I've provided a little bit of background and brief summary of the work completed to date. Uh, however, given the significant history and work to get these projects to where, to the point where they are now, I'd certainly be happy to sit down and meet with any counselor to provide a more fulsome background. I, I won't read the report, but we'll highlight a few things. With the elevator project, we are behind schedule, but are now out of the ground. And work will begin on Monday with the masonry block elevator shaft. We expect, expect the shaft to be finished in January, and the elevator sub Delta to begin installation of the elevator components in February. Uh, the updated project schedule is indicating an April twenty twenty-three completion date. For the five Huron Reno and connecting Link Edition, uh, as per council's direction in November, final design and permit drawings are being completed. We are expecting the construction tender to go out in late January, with tender results before council in February. This tender will only be open to the eight pre-qualified contractors that we pre-qualified back in September. As well, we are working on a construction management services RFP, which will be later this month or early January. And finally, just to note that we've been approached by CBRE on half, on behalf of Service Ontario. Uh, their new location is running behind with renovations. And since our schedule is also running behind, we are finalizing an extension with Service Ontario for the month of January twenty twenty-three with an option for February. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Hey, any questions for John? See no questions. We do have a motion that council receives the Courthouse Campus Facility Projects Update Report. Moved by Deputy Warden Callum, second by Counselor Orr. All in favor? Eric. Thanks, John. Okay, now we'll move to our structure number AS seventeen replacement, and I believe, uh, Bill Wilson is going to join us. Morning, Bill. Where's yours?
Good morning, Warden Nagets and Council. Um, thanks, John. Um, John, as John mentioned, this report is with regards to, uh, the structure replacement on Perth Line eighty-six, um, which is included in the proposed twenty twenty-three capital budget. Uh, structure AS seventeen is a rigid-framed concrete culvert that crosses Perth Line eighty-six um, on the Ogrady Drain, which is, uh, about half a kilometer or a little bit more, um, west of Perth Road one thirty-one, right near the, uh, the village of Treely there. Um, I've included a site map to, uh, to provide counsel a little bit more detail on the exact location. Um, the structure over the years has gone over a number of condition assessments. Um, the most recent OSIM uh, condition assessment was completed in twenty twenty-one, and the bridge condition, um, index was assigned a value of twenty-six, um, which is out of a hundred and can be translated into a structure that is in very poor condition. Uh, that section of Perth Line eighty-six forms the boundary between Perth and Wellington Counties. So this project would be subject to the boundary agreement, which sees a cost share of fifty percent, um, by both parties, um, for the construction costs. Um, so over the course of twenty twenty-two, the design of the replacement structure, um, was completed by BM Ross, and we have now received, um, the approvals necessary to move forward with its construction in twenty twenty-three. Uh, throughout the course of the design, um, our boundary partner being Wellington County, um, they've been involved throughout the process and are supportive of the replacement structure type, and also, um, the inclusion of the project in, um, their twenty twenty-three budget. Um, as we all know, Perth Line eighty-six is one of the county's most heavily traveled roads, uh, within our network. So there has been a, a great deal of consideration, um, regarding the impacts to traffic that this, um, this construction project will create. Uh, we did look at alternatives, um, so that we could stage construction and maintain some level of traffic flow, um. But that only would increase, uh, construction length, um, and the cost of the project. And there are also some, some site constraints there, uh, mainly with overhead utilities and some underground utilities, um, that's kind of limited us to certain options out there. So the, the, the preferred design, um, structure type is a precast structure. Um, it has an anticipated construction time of three weeks. However, we will, we will need a full road closure for approximately two of those weeks to facilitate the replacement of this. Um, and during that, we will have, uh, a detour route in place. Uh, however, that has not been finalized yet. Um, we kind of have two, two ways we can do it. We can go north of the highway or up the county road, which puts us into Wellington County, um, through Mapleton, Tung Shaoan Ship. Um, or we can stay within Perth County and, and look at using our, our road network through there. Um, with regards to tender administration, uh, staff and our consulting engineer are recommending that it would be advantageous if we could tender this, um, early in Q one of the new year. Um, looking at January, um, to issue tenders and, and have the report back to council early in February. Um, at which time council will be able to review the prices and, uh, provide direction to staff at that time. Uh, the anticipated construction and contract administration costs are estimated to be one million dollars for this project. That will be shared, uh, on a, on an equal fifty, fifty percent ratio, um, between Perth and Wellington Counties. And Perth County will be the lead on this project. And at this time, this report is just to provide council with information on this upcoming project and that we would like to have tenders, um, issued early in the new year and report back. Um, as I mentioned, early in January or, 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 sorry, early February, late January with, uh, results of those tenders. So if there are any questions, um, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Any questions for Bill on this report? Counselor Trenkowski?
Through you, your worship. Um, Bill, is there any sense from the designers about, um, the potential for any, um, project delays due to the delivery of the precast culvert sections? Um, like what, what's the status of that industry? Are they able to meet prescribed, uh, scheduling deadlines? Or is that a challenge for that group?
Yes, through you, Warden Nagets. Um, there is, uh, as with anything, it seems, construction-related this, these days, there, there is a potential for delays, and, and that is one of the reasons that we would like to get this tendered early, um, such that the contractor can get the order in for that, that, that component of the, of the structure. Um, it's precast footings, and it's also the, the precast structure itself.
And one, uh, follow-up question related that, related to that, uh, Warden, if I may, um, are there any environmental restrictions such as, uh, working in water restrictions that, if the, for whatever reason, if the supply of the culvert, precast culvert, uh, components were delayed, um, is there any potential that, do the timing restrictions of other uh, conditions on the site that it would have, there would be a potential that the project couldn't be done until twenty twenty-four? Just.
Yeah, through, through you, Warden Nagets, there is a fisheries timing window on this project, um. But we have, I believe it's July or June fifteenth, um, until the, till the end of the year to have it constructed. So there's kind of two schools of thought. When the, when the best time to do it would be, uh, we, we want to obviously try to avoid construction during the, the peak summer months for that road and, um, probably look towards, um, later in the year, maybe, uh, September construction. Um, that also impacts, um, the school buses as well. So the exact timing of the work i- is still something that needs to be, um, worked out with, uh, the successful contractor.
Thanks, Bill.
Counselor Smith?
Thanks, Warden. Through you, Bill, what, what's the notification process to, as far as notifying the properties close to there, um, be it fire, be it prob, the province? How, how does that all come together?
So our, our general notifications, we use municipal five-one-one, but, um, we also do direct, uh, direct notifications to property owners within the, within the limits of the construction site. Those will be, uh, door-to-door, um, whether it's, you know, if no one's around, then we'll leave a, a letter in the mailbox. Um, and then through our local fire ambulance, um, those are just direct notifications to them.
Anyone else with questions? Anyone else with questions? No? Okay, then we have a motion that council receives a structure for AS seventeen replacement, Perth Line eighty six report. We need a mover and a seconder moved by councillor Trunkowski, second councillor Duncan. Any more comments or questions? All in favor? Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to move to council reports. Is there any? One with a report that they'd like to give? Nope, okay, then we'll move to bylaws, and the first bylaw is thirty nine oh three dash twenty twenty two, and it's a bylaw. To appoint the C E M P, Richard Fraser. So we have a motion that the bylaw thirty nine oh three, twenty twenty two. Be read a first, second, and third time and finally pass this fifteenth day of December, twenty twenty two. We need a mover and a seconder for that, moved by councillor Aitchison, second by councillor Orr. Excuse me, all in favor? Aired. Okay, and the second bylaw we have is for the passing of the. Uh it's thirty nine, ten, twenty twenty two, be read a first, second, and third time, and finally pass this fifteenth day of December, and that's. To do with our closed meeting investigator. And Tyler's just bringing up the um. Nope. Go back. Oh, there, okay. So I need uh someone to move that uh that motion for the bylaw thirty nine, ten, moved by councillor McKenzie. Second by councillor Smith. All in favor? Aired. Okay, do we have any other business? Councillor McKenzie?
Yes, I'm just wondering if we could have a report um in the the near future uh with regards to where Perth County is. With installation of fiber optic, there was a bit on the news here. Uh within the last couple of weeks of the great progress that's being made in our county to the west. And I just wonder how we're faring out uh in Perth County. So it doesn't have to happen right away, but just when. Be possible to get some information with regards to that.
Okay, Laurie, you want to comment?
Certainly, thank you through the warden. Absolutely, we will have that as part of probably a January report. Something else on that?
You will notice that I'm not at home doing this meeting today, and that's partially because of the unstable. Or unstable internet, so thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have anything they would like to bring up under other business, councillor Aitchison?
I'll go back to that fiber thing, and Todd probably has more information. Councillor Kassenberg probably has more information than I do, but. Perth County was one of the last ones back when they rolled this all out because we were considered quote unquote over served. With high-speed internet compared to some earlier. So yeah, we've got a little bit in Perth County up around Bornholm and a bunch of places. Some in Perth East, uh it's been limited, but. I hope they don't run out of money before they get to Perth County.
Okay. Councillor Kassenberg?
Uh just just quickly, Warden Eggers, um I don't think there's any concern about SWIFT running out of money for its projects. Um all in fact appears to be relatively on track in Perth County. There is a wonderful web-based um map-based viewer on the SWIFT Rural Broadband website. Um that any member of the public can access to review the progress of fiber projects that have been funded by SWIFT. It is prudent as well to remember, and I'm sure Ms. Wolf and team will bring forward the appropriate report. That not all broadband projects are being funded by SWIFT. There are several other entities and programs that have been announced by various levels of government that are addressing broadband. SWIFT is probably about ten or fifteen percent of the total solution in southwestern Ontario. And um and so we're we're also looking to the other agencies for that information, but. Uh if you go to the SWIFT website, I think it's swiftruralbroadband.ca. You'll find the the map viewer and get a sense of status of all the projects in southwest Ontario, including ours in Perth County.
Anyone else with other business? I just have one item I'd like to tell you about where I was this past Monday. I had the honor of being with Minister Bassini. He is the Minister of Environment. He came to to Perth County. He toured the Saint Mary's Cement Plant, first of all. Uh in the morning, and then he went to Perth East, and we toured a machine and tool. Uh place on at Little Lakes, and then at night, Matthew Ray hosted an event for. Uh different people to come and and meet with him. So it was a great day. He's a great minister, and it was a privilege to uh represent Perth East and Perth County that day and. Be part of his little tour, so I just thought I'd tell you what I had been up to this week. Do we have any announcements? Laurie?
Uh thank you through the warden. Uh just on behalf of myself and beyond. On behalf of the staff, I just wanted to express our appreciation to council for a great year of accomplishment and. That we're looking forward to working with everybody in the new year and just to wish you all a happy holiday. And safe, safe driving.
Okay. So we do have a need for closed session. So at this time, we'll let Sean get that set up so that we can go into closed and deal with our matters there. So just give us here a few minutes. Everybody, maybe we'll take a a two-minute break and give Sean a. So for our viewers, on behalf of Perth County Council and staff, I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and all the best in twenty twenty three. And to to council and staff, I want to wish my personal uh. Wishes for a a great Christmas season and all the best in in twenty twenty three. So we hope we have. Uh a great new year. I'm looking forward to the next year and what we're all going to accomplish, and and thanks for everything. So on that. We have uh one more, two more motions that bylaw thirty nine oh nine dash twenty twenty two. Being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the corporation of the county of Perth. At its regular meeting held December fifteen, twenty twenty two, is read a first, second, and third time and finally passed December fifteen, twenty twenty two. Mover and a seconder moved by. Councillor Aitchison, second by councillor McDermott, all in favor? Aired. And the last motion of the day is that council meeting be adjourned at approximately ten thirteen AM. Moved by councillor Orr, second by. Councillor Duncan, all in favor? Aired. Thanks, everyone. Hope yous all have a great Christmas. Enjoy the season, and we'll see yous all next year. Have a great day.